Any adjustments to the agenda? Minutes from the prior meeting, I will make a motion to accept them.
Some, second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public comments, hold it to three minutes or less there, or he did.
Doc, this is kind of outside the field, but Doc, you made a comment this afternoon where we don't have the mailbox available to us. We can't store it anymore. I mean, you're having to go section here.
To have a post office box?
No, no mailbox.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can ask some people, no, but I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it probably will happen.
That's what I said. Last time I said I'd have it.
But I can ask somebody, I know somebody who'll.
Well, if you're asking Jane, I need for like a general mailbox for dropping off mail. That's what came before, so I have this.
Oh, oh, okay, mailbox for dropping off mail.
Right.
Okay.
And instead have to drive over to Central River or to the mailbox.
Alright, I can ask somebody, but I suspect it probably won't happen. You don't usually see many of those other than at a post office. So, I don't know if you could do that or not, so. Alright, anything else?
I'll follow up, and I think it's a great idea what Jane said. I mean, if it's a town without a post office, it seems like we could have.
But I can't say that I know of any, anywhere besides that a post office that you have those.
They're around, yeah.
You gotta see them in the town.
Yeah, you do.
There used to be one right outside the Douglas Falls.
Post office.
No, no, the Opera House.
Yeah, yeah.
On the Atkinson Street there.
Yeah, there's one on Atkinson Street.
So, yeah, I mean, the mail carrier could pick it up, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, they would, they'd pick it up every time.
It's ironic that the one on Atkinson Street was made by my uncle's factory.
Really?
Report to Asti.
Alright, Mr. Asti.
Hi, I wanted to introduce myself. My name's Wayne Asti, I'm a Democratic candidate for Vermont State Senate, Wyndham County. And I thought I'd come out here and see what this town looks like. I don't know if many senators or candidates get out here. I used to be a lawyer, an economist, I retired and thought I would spend the rest of my days reading. And after three years, that was boring. Got a job as a zoning administrator in Dover, where I have a house. And I started painting, so I have an apartment in Brattleboro. And that's what I do, and it still wasn't enough. Worked for the state for 30-plus years, was in the Air Force. And I have positions on all kinds of things. Three minutes wouldn't give me enough time to tell you all of them, but if there's any that you're particularly interested in, I'd be glad to tell you what I think. And I would certainly be interested in what you think, because I'm a firm believer in representing the constituents and not myself or somebody else. And the last thing I would do in the state senate is not butt in. There will be an opinion, and I will share. I will not say, I don't want to make things worse, because if they're that bad, they can't get worse.
Okay, well, if anybody has any thing they want to talk to you about or anything, I'm sure you're available for that. You left a little flyer here for us, so that they can take that and get in touch with you and stuff.
Anytime.
Okay.
Thank you all enough. Here you go.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We in public comments?
Yeah.
Nothing, no, we just, we're just. Alright. Town boards and officials. Matt? Town boards and officials. Doc? Not Doc, what about?
Oh, I got three town board items tonight. Emergency management. Next week, we're having a community emergency preparedness forum. Right here, next Thursday, April 26th, at 6 o'clock at the Athens Town Office. We have a guest speaker, Richard Kleganoff, from the Regional Emergency Management Program Coordinator for Vermont Emergency Management. Accompanied by Joan Burbola, President of Wyndham County Disaster Animal Response Team. The discussion will be about what individual households could do to prepare for an emergency event, and then what the community can come together to do to prepare to help each other. He's also going to comment on the Athens Emergency Plan with suggestions on how we might strengthen it. And then he's going to bring us up to date about various resources that the state has for an emergency. Let's see, it says here, discussion, he will supplement the literature that he will provide to all who attend.
Isn't that going to be more, it's going to be for everybody, it's not just going to be for like the emergency committee?
Oh, no, that's the emphasis of this announcement. This is, we hope to get as many people in the community to attend as possible. It's not just the emergency management group.
I was at a training with him the other day, and he indicated it's going to be for the public, for, you know, just everybody. Doesn't necessarily, you know, just officials or anything like that, anybody can come to.
Yeah, no, this is open for the public, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
Yeah, is there a way you can let everybody know about it?
Well, I asked some of these, considered any postings in town, or have done any postings in town. It's kind of an odd timing for, gosh, I don't remember whether the last month's a thinnian had any.
I don't think it did.
Yeah.
Whiteboard there?
Yeah, I guess we can get it up on, I guess we can get it up, yeah, a whiteboard would be an excellent idea. We can try to get it on the Athens Facebook page. Can do that. Months ago, we were, the emergency management group, we were discussing, and you know, Tim Stevenson, who's chair of the group, he's there. What kind of situations can we think of statewide that we need to be prepared for? Excuse me, my answer to that is Sandy and I, a few years ago, back when Jim Douglas was governor, we went to a statewide emergency management forum. And one of these seminars there was, somebody had put together facts and figures from the 1938 hurricane and the devastating effect it had on the state back then. And I, he was estimating that in today's infrastructure, taking that kind of a hit, would be at least $4 billion worth of damage, if I remember the figure right, it was a very high number. So I suggested the group try to get some of that information. It's pretty sobering, it's quite a bit worse than what we experienced with Irene. So, alright. Emergency management. Union High School District, we're having our high school board meeting, regular meeting this coming Monday. One of the issues that I see on the agenda is a firearms safety resolution. I believe it's going to be introduced by David Major from Westminster, he spoke about it. I haven't had an advance look at the resolution. I suspected something that I will support, but probably would amend to include. Well, first of all, the resolution, I believe, if I understand David correctly, is declaring support for the state efforts to, you know, helping some of the gun control laws. And I would, the amendment that I would add to that is to encourage the state to establish a statewide firearms injury database that would be a model for the US government to adopt. The idea is not my own, actually, listening to a late March broadcast on National Public Radio. They were looking back at the 1966 declaration by President Lyndon Johnson to have a nationwide automobile injury database, which they were able to see across a broad spectrum, you know, the different ways in which systems fail. And it's led to a lot of improvements for the auto industry. So my, anyway, this issue is coming up. I know the governor has lost a lot of his supporters by the bills that he's signed. I'm listening to both sides of the issue. So that's that. I don't know if anybody, as your representative, I don't know if anybody had any feedback that I could, you know, bring to this meeting. The last one is cemetery commission. In December, I approached the board saying that we would like to return to our own autonomy as elected officials. We'd like to control our own warrants book and work with the treasurer to get our bills paid directly. And I was asked to, you know, because we don't have our own banking account now, everything is under the general town ledger. I was asked to check that out with the Grand League of Cities and Towns. Quite frankly, I'm not at the time or energy to chase that down. Talking with my commissioners last Wednesday, it seems as though that a small amount of invoices that we handle, that we would instead try to work under the Athens Board of Selectmen. We try to get our invoices in a more timely basis and submit our requests to the select board. One thing we would like to do as a commission is we'd like to move the approximately $11,500. That's in two CDs. We'd like to move that money into an investment portfolio with LPL Financial Services of Walpole, New Hampshire. As I understand our status, we would need the board to approve the transfer of these funds.
Well, we might use office in May, we could put that on the agenda to vote on that and to work on that in May. Because Tom's not here.
No, Tom's not here tonight.
I probably wouldn't be voting on it. Everybody's moved, you put it on for me.
Yeah, I would, yes. I would point out to the board and the public that David Demas recused himself for a vote on transferring those funds. That was a for, a for commission decision, a for, a fine.
Yeah, I recused myself just because.
Yeah.
Alright. Is that, so that's reasonable, you to wait till May, till everybody's here?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just notify Patrick Kelly and her another one, I don't think it'd be terribly disappointing.
Alright. Anything else?
That's it then.
Budget committee stuff? There's a quarter one budget report in front of you guys, I think? Or it was in your mailbox, so I moved it.
I got it.
Okay, Shirley. So this is, quarter one was as of last month, but I wasn't here last month, so this is, this is it. And we're doing very well, we're spending, we're just at 16.88% of our annual budget as of last month. The only thing that stood out to me as being like over capacity was the prepared maintenance of the new backhoe. We've spent $2,298 on it already, and we budgeted $2,000. So hopefully that won't be much more, or it's, hopefully it's under warranty if it does. So, yeah, but that was, that was the only thing that really stood out to me on there. And then, these are the projects that the budget committee's been working on the last couple of meetings. It's writing policies for the reserve funds. This is a little bit edited, Denise. So, it's for four funds, the new capital reserve fund, the new long-term highway projects fund, the paving fund, and the equipment fund. So, seems like since Tom's not here, and I can maybe leave my copy for him after this meeting, and if you want to maybe review them for next month and get feedback back to the committee. Along with this, we figured out a way in NIMRIC to track earmark within funds. So you'll see in the long-term highway projects fund and in the equipment fund, especially in the equipment funds. You can look at that and see how for each piece of equipment, there is an amount that goes into, that's earmarked for each year. And if you look at your balance sheet, that should be in front of you also. And flip through to the equipment fund and that, you can actually see how it's tracked in NIMRIC. So each piece of equipment in NIMRIC.
Has their own.
Has their, has their own like sub-fund, and we've put notes in there. So it says when the next replacement date is and what the balance available for that piece of equipment is currently. So, right now, there's not a lot of balance. We split it up according to like where we thought it should be as of this year when we're starting it. And so, I think the backhoe and large, large truck and small truck might have some money in them, and then the rest will once taxes come in.
I thought that would be a way to track them.
Sounds good to me.
Cool, so we put a lot of details in, like the new capital reserve fund. You know, I think that's the one that you might have the most input into, like how much we want to put into it each year, what do we cap it at, and how does it get used?
Yeah, well, let's look this over, we'll bring these up next month.
Yeah.
When Tom's here, we can all look at stuff.
Yeah, and I hope is that if you agree on it, then they can get signed and referred to and amended as needed when projects come up and money gets spent.
I think what it would have to be is put the policies on for review next month, and then the following month, adopt them. We couldn't do it both in one.
Right, right, so you can make edits.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
That's it?
That's all.
Sherry was supposed to be here, but she's not. At our last meeting, we went through that letter for the heirs for the meeting house. I think she brought it up last, last meeting. And I have a copy, and it's dated for today, but I'm not sure if she wants me to have it. But I can give it to you guys, and you can look at it. It's just for the permission from the heirs to do the work.
Do we know if Tom, did you guys go up and look at the drainage around the building? Do you have any?
And the only other thing we did was try to come up with some ideas for fundraisers for the meeting house.
Okay.
But that was it.
So, do you, this has not been sent out, because it needs to be signed, but do you want Tom to check it before you send the letter out?
I'm not sure that we necessarily need.
I mean, someone has to do the work anyway.
Do the work, but I mean, I would think that this would, so do you make a motion that we sign this?
Sign this.
I will second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then she can take it back to Sherry, because Sherry didn't even sign it yet.
Yeah. Can you just make me a couple of copies of that, one for Darlene and one for myself? You want? You want?
Yes.
So, yeah, like three of those, and then we'll sign one. Alright. Anything else, Jane?
Probably should all sign it, we should probably sign it, although the both signatures would be on it, but anyway, so.
Alright. We will move on to roads.
They're all in pretty good shape. We got one pickup that's parked in the right way. I think you know what I'm talking about.
I do.
And the little truck and the big truck are headed to the shop this next week. So I was wondering if the board would authorize Darlene to pay the bills when they come in. It shouldn't be too bad. One's just, the big truck, it just needs a bunch of wiring work done to it. And the little truck, it needs brakes on the rear end.
Do you have the original? Do you want me to sign it?
I can do this.
Oh, I want the copy, I want to just keep a copy. I'll keep this. That's the original. Alright, where are they getting done?
Over to Willie's.
And, but you have no idea how much on the?
No, but it shouldn't be that bad comparatively to the rest of the projects we have done. I think, I'm hoping the calipers, the slide gear just froze, they just could be taken apart and cleaned. I'm hoping, but I don't know, I haven't really looked that close to the rotors or anything on that, on the back of that truck. And the big truck really shouldn't be that bad, I think it's just the wiring right behind the motor again.
Wasn't that just repaired after one?
Yep, that's why it's going to a different shop.
Okay. They didn't fix it quite there the first time, or is it?
I don't, honestly, I don't know, I haven't dug into the.
I just don't like paying to have the same thing repaired again.
Yeah, I'm not too happy about it, but I don't know where the problem is, it could be in a completely different spot.
Alright. I'll make a motion that we authorize the treasurer to.
Pay those two bills.
Pay those two bills when they come in. Do you second that?
I'll second that.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else on the roads? Nothing?
That should do it.
Okay. I may ask you to. I may ask you to wait here for a little bit when we go into executive session. So don't take off at this moment. Warrants and mail?
They're all set, I signed those all.
Oh, I have something, David.
Yeah?
This is for the audit. We have to have all this stuff for VLCT when they do the payroll audit. And it needs, it's a contract in there, and it needs to be signed by the select board.
All members are just.
How much is that going to cost?
Nothing.
Nothing?
But if we don't have this, we could get them all.
Alright, I will make a motion.
Then we sign the LTC audit.
Audit, payroll, that makes a motion, do we do that? Do you second?
Yeah, second.
All those in favor? Aye.
And Tom is not here, so it's only going to be the two of us.
Yes, it's okay, we got a majority.
There's only the one on this.
Yeah. There were not each one, yes.
Oh, I thought you meant there was one for all of them.
No. One for each one, sorry.
Come on, I'll be doing the other.
Okay.
Was there any other mail, other than what we have?
This one, we don't have to correct it, we just.
I think they're just saying that they work for us so that they can get insurance.
You should sell yourself a point, right?
Yeah, so that they will go through us. We should keep that on file, just.
Yes, just in case, but when did she?
Maybe we should.
Yes, but she, this is 2018, but didn't she, 2017? But yeah, we have personnel stuff together. That's where that should be.
Alright. I'll make a motion where premature public, general public knowledge would clearly place the town of Athens in a substantial disadvantage. I make a motion to go into executive session.
For a legal matter.
For a legal matter and a popular personnel matter. And if Matt can stay for half of it. Hopefully it won't take long. We are out of executive session, no decisions were made in executive session. Or votes were taken in executive session. And we will move on to select board comments.
I'd like to thank the road crew for doing a great, great job with all this ice and snow that we've had. And keep up the good work.
Hopefully you don't have any more work with ice and snow this year. That's my comment. We will go on to public comments on agenda.
No, I just said to Matt before we left, we go off, we have to use executive session. Kudos to the road crew.
Yes.
It was a tough winter.
It has been all along.
Someone mentioned outside about the lighting project in the town garage, and when that might be getting done, so I just thought I'd remind, because we did budget for that this year.
I don't know, we probably want to talk to Tom about one.
I mean, we did budget for that, for this year, but it.
I mean, we did budget for that, for this year, but taxes don't really come in until September.
But we have all the last year's tax money, so we're not really in the buy.
Yeah, we, I mean, we could do it if we, I think.
And I would, once it gets underway, make sure, contact Efficiency Vermont for all the rebates.
You're looking at me?
Who I, no. I'm not in charge of the thing, of the project. No, whoever, like when Tom does it, we'll make sure he contacts them. I think actually the electrician fills in all the paperwork, but we have to make sure it gets done because there was quite a big rebates.
Yeah.
But I know he, the gentleman was saying, if we fill them in online, there's an additional rebate. If we call them, they can walk us through it. And I think he said it was.
Like five percent or something?
I think it was, yeah, five or 10% more, so.
Alright, is there any further business? I will make the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.